That adequate notice of this meeting is being given and that is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Didich.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Present.
Ms. Veely.
Here.
Chairman Von Aiken.
Here.
We also have with us our board planner, Mr. Weiser, our board engineer, Mr. Canjiano, Angela Board Attorney, Ms.
Steinle.
Steinle.
All right. Thank you. Would everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is open to the general public. If there are any members of the general public wishing to bring forth something before this committee that is not on the agenda for tonight, please do so. Seeing none come forward, we'll move on to our agenda where we have a resolution for applicant number 22.516 for West Mount Plaza. Is the applicant present?
No, they're not.
They're not present?
They don't need to be for a resolution.
Oh.
Oh.
Okay. All right. So where's my head at? Okay. Thank you for the correction, Nora. Have all the members of the committee been able to review the resolution? Are there any questions at this time that haven't been addressed? All right. If not, I'll accept a resolution, a, uh, sorry. I'll accept a.
Motion.
A motion. Thank you, Nora. On the resolution. I just got back from vacation. Wildwood was wonderful.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Mealy.
My motion to approve the resolution for West Mount Plaza, application number 22.516, 792-808, Route 46, Block 698, Lot 15.2, Minor Site Plan to Construct a Loading Platform with Open Canopy and Loading Docks.
Do we have a second?
Second, Didich.
All right. Nora, please call the roll.
Didich.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Veely.
Yes.
Von Aiken.
Yes. All right. Then we will move on to our agenda. Application number 22:524. Is the applicant present?
Yes, we are. Chairman Steven Tombalkian from Weiner World Group on behalf of the applicant, SESI Consulting Engineers. To my right is Franz Lacki, the principal from SESI. And if the board will remember him, Franz testified most recently for the Two Hilton Court application for Onyx. And at that time, we announced that his company was the newest engineering company to move into Parsippany. And they're about two weeks away from finally occupying their new space on Route 46. And that's why we're here tonight, because their entire company is picking up and moving from Monville to Parsippany. They have storage requirements. So they've come in this evening, minor site plan to ask for a 600-square-foot accessory storage building in their parking lot. To make life even simpler, having reviewed the board engineers and the board planners' review memorandum, there was an issue regarding the height of a fence. If that was the fence, the entire fence was eliminated a few weeks ago. Revised plans were submitted showing landscaping in lieu of the fence. So we should be good in terms of waivers or any types of reliefs. But with that being said, do we need to swear in Franz? Or since it's a committee, we don't do that?
Yep, we'll swear.
We'll swear in it?
Yeah. Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. And please state your name, spell your last name, and is this just a fact witness?
Uh, yeah. My testimony is all.
Okay. All right. And provide the board with some background as to your experience.
Okay. Franz Lacki, L-A-K-I. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey and New York. I testified in numerous boards in the past. I am a principal at SESI Consulting Engineers located currently in Pinebrooks in the city of Parsippany.
And Franz, you were previously qualified as an expert in site engineering from this board for the Two Hilton Court application six months ago or so?
That is correct.
Okay. And your license remained in good standing?
Yes.
Okay. We would ask that the board accept Mr. Lacki as an expert in professional engineering.
Any questions or concerns from the board? All right. Seeing none, at this point, I'd just like to cover our waivers and completeness with our board planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, we were not able to get the completeness review in under the statutory 45-day requirement. But we did do a completeness review, and we found that the applicant has submitted all items required under Appendix A. And there are a couple of items for Form 3 that they indicated were not applicable. And we do not object to any of those items. So I think the applicant can move forward. The board should have all the information it needs to make an informed decision.
Any questions or concerns from the board about the completeness? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move forward. All in favor to accept the waivers? You can signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay. Any opposed? None. Okay. Waivers are approved. You may continue with your presentation.
All right, Franz, you have up on the board a copy of your minor site plan. Can you just spend a few moments work going around the site just to give the board an introduction to your new facility? And then give the details regarding the accessory building you'd like to add in the parking lot?
Yes.
Mr. Lacki, please use the microphone and speak into it. There's one sitting there. It's on already.
So our new site is located at 959 Route 46 East. It's next to the Park and Ride at Everwick. We are at the north side of the lot. We're fronting along Route 46. At the rear, we have Route 80. You've got the, I believe it's a Ramada Inn on one side and the Parky, the Park and Ride on the other. There is a five-story office building in the center of the lot. We're going to be occupying the third floor of that building. We are proposing a CMU masonry shed approximately 28 feet by 12 feet wide and 10 feet high. It is located in the farthest corner of the parking lot. We propose to put it in the pavement area, taking out a total of four parking spaces, not increasing any impervious coverage. We're increasing the building coverage very slightly. Since it is a small building, we still meet all the bulk criteria. We meet the bulk criteria for all of our setbacks. We are, we were originally proposing an eight-foot-high channeling fence covered in a turf-type mesh screening. Because of the design waiver, we decided just to remove that and put in some evergreen screening in front of it, Leland Cypress or some other de-resistant type of evergreen, so Skip Laurel's, something along those, that nature, to screen the shed from Route 46 and main pedestrians within the parking lot itself. We're not impacting any drainage. Everything's going to be functioning the same. We're not proposing any new lighting. The parking lot is adequately lit at night for anything that we might need to access it. We don't intend to access the storage shed much more out of normal business hours. It's for our field staff to access some testing equipment, and we do a lot of construction observations. So, and we don't want the dirt and everything else that they track in to track in through the lobby of our nice new building. We're in a substantially different situation right now. So the, that's the main purpose of this shed in the back corner here. And there'll be normal construction hours, kind of. We'll be getting in there about 5:00 AM will be the earliest, 7:00 o'clock at night will be really the latest for the most part. But predominantly during normal business hours is when the shed will be accessed.
But the purpose of the shed is just to store equipment?
Correct.
Okay. There's no manufacturing or any type of noise-making activities taking place inside that building?
No. No. We propose lighting. We have an HVAC unit that would be like a split-duck unit mounted in the rear so that it would be facing Route 80 with the sound barrier and the evergreen growth and everything else in the back, so no one will be able to see it. No real noise. And the HVAC is mainly for temperature and humidity control for the equipment for calibration purposes.
And the HVAC, that's like a mini-split you would see in a small building?
Yep.
Okay. I don't have any more questions for Franz. Board has any questions?
All right. We'll start with the planner, Mr. Weiser.
Thank you. I really just, there's a couple of items in our report that are informational only. They really don't apply to this application. But do you know the height, Franz, of the five-story building?
Eight feet? Not a thought ahead.
Okay. But it's a pre-existing building. You're not doing anything with it?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. And we talked about the design waiver. We have in our introduction to our report that the storage shed was going to be made from a modified shipping container. Is that, was that?
That was part of the original application, and then that was going to require a use variance. So we have opted to go with a more permanent structure that will, it suits our needs better anyways, of a CMU building. It's no longer a modified shipping container.
Okay. And do you, you have a graphic of what it's going to look like?
Actually, yes. We did have a rendering prepared. This would be the kind of the view from almost the building, covered in evergreen, CMU building, painted the same color as the existing building. You won't really even be able to see it.
And was this rendering provided previously?
It was not.
Okay. We'll mark it.
Shall we call it A1?
That's fine.
Color rendering of storage, accessory building elevation. Fancy word for it.
And you said this is going to be painted CMU?
Yes.
The entire thing is going to be painted the same? There's no different elevations?
No.
Okay. And just last, and I think it was mentioned earlier, but just to confirm, there seem to be two conflicting square footages in the application materials we reviewed. It's a 600-square-foot?
It is not a 600-square-foot. It is 360? Hang on, I'm sorry. I'm just breaking out the calculator. It is 12 by 28. Yeah, 336.
336 square feet. Well, that's less than 600 anyway. That, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have in terms of response to our report.
Thank you, Mr. Weiser. Mr. Canjiano?
I just wanted to follow up. So the applicant had made a submission last week on some revised plans, and he addressed actually most of our comments on there. Just a, just a comment to give the testimony on the, on the existing or the required parking count. The, you had to indicate the building's five stories and which the square footage. Can you just give the testimony on that?
Okay. So the, we took the footprint of the building, which is 29,000 and change square feet. It's five stories tall. So we calculated the required parking at 250 spaces per, sorry, one space for 250 square feet. And that's how we came up with a parking requirement of 497. Sorry, we used one.
You got 47 on the plan.
Yeah. So we used, sorry, one per 300 square feet, not one per 250. One per 250 would have been the maximum.
Right.
Not the minimum. So it hasn't changed. We are at 287 spaces required minimum. And we are take, there are 500.
287 or 487?
487, yes. Yes.
And you're eliminating four, you said?
We're eliminating four. And there was a total of 505. We're down to 501 by eliminating these four spaces.
Okay. So you're parking in compliant with the ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. The HVAC unit on the building, you had mentioned, is it a rooftop or where is it located?
No. It'll be mounted, wall-mounted in the rear, facing Route 80.
Okay. And this is a CMU constructed in place or prefab built?
Constructed in place.
The curb, I see you pulled out the, or taken out the fence and putting in evergreen screening in front there. It looks like you're taking out a support for a strip pavement. Is that intended to be curved?
No.
It probably should be, just so you don't have any erosion issues. Do you have any issues curving it?
We have no issues curving it.
I would have pressed it to curb that. And it does, this, this layout, does, does it affect any drainage patterns?
No. It's at the relative high point of the parking lot.
And it drains to?
Drains to inlet. It all drains away. Correct.
That's all I have.
Any questions from the committee? Mr. Mealy.
You started to mention lighting. Is there going to be lighting inside the shed or outside in front of it?
There will be lighting inside the shed, nothing exterior.
Okay. Any other questions from the committee?
You're not going to be storing any catalytic converters in there, are you? No, I'm kidding. Laughing on this one.
So a question for me. You mentioned bringing in evergreens that would be de-resistant, and you'll be going over the species with our forester?
Yeah.
Our town forester?
We can do that, yeah.
Okay. Very good. The entrance to the shed, it looks as if you have a standard, we'll say roughly 36-inch door.
Yep.
In other words, it won't be a garage door or anything of that nature.
No. It'll be a standard man door.
Okay. That's all my questions.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Didich.
So without getting into the details of the equipment out there, anything operated by gas or propane or that kind of thing?
We may store some small generators, but we don't plan on keeping any gas in it other than what might be residual. We usually run the generators out of gas before we store them anyways. But small handheld Hummer generators, that's it.
Okay. So again, question for professionals. So do you have to worry about any safety issues here because of gas kind of thing?
No, I don't have the jurisdiction of this board either.
It's, they're going to have to pull building permit for it, so the code enforcement or the construction office. We'll take a look at that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Last chance, board members. All right. Mr. Tombalkian?
Oh, well, I think it's a pretty simple application. Again, welcoming Parsippany's most recent addition, SESI Consulting. I'm pretty excited they're going to be closer to our office now than they were before. I mean, just moving across the model. But again, it's a very simple application. It's a very useful structure that they need for their operations. It would really make their Class A space remain Class A, not muddy and gross. So for that purpose, we would ask the board to approve the addition of this accessory building.
Any, any last comments from the board? Any comments from the general public? All right.
I just wanted to confirm the conditions where, that the applicant will curb in front of the building. Is that what?
Right.
And then we'll also go, review the landscaping species with the township forester. Okay.
No problem.
All right.
Okay. With that said, I'll accept the motion using the conditions provided by our attorney.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Didich.
I move the motion to approve the application number 22:524, SESI 959, Route 46, Block 722, Lot 2, Minor Site Plan to Construct a Shed.
We have a second.
I'll second, Math.
All right. Nora, please call the vote.
Didich.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Veely.
Yes.
Von Aiken.
Yes. All right. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Have a great summer.
All right. With that said, we have 10 minutes before the major committee. So enjoy your break.
Anything new? How was your fourth?
Yeah. Yeah. It was.
Yes.
Yes.
Anyway, dear, I'm planning to leave.
I tried, and I quite think. That would be some visit. Wow, so you are.
Well, you are going to.
That's great. It sounds, I bet it will be.
Mr. Chairman? Good, thank you.
No, I hope I didn't.
Hope so. Every day I say thank you.
How are you, Mr. Chairman? Absolutely.
So would you join us?
Absolutely, love it.
Sir?
Yep. And?
Sir, how are you?
Good. Good.
Hi, how are you?
How are you, Mr. Mayor? Good to see you.
Coach? I'm good.
I'm Marina Steinle. I'm here for Dan today. Hi, Marina. Yes. Covering meeting.
Mary.
Hi, Mary. How are you?
Good to see you.
Hi, how are you?
How are you, Mr. Mayor? Good to see you.
Coach? I'm good.
I'm Marina Steinle. I'm here for Dan today. Hi, Marina. Yes. Yes. Covering meeting.
Mary.
Hi, Mary. How are you? Good to see you. Yeah. They basically told me.
Hello, Tom.
Michael, good to see you, sir.
All right, sir. These are really good people. Wasn't sure I was going to make it tonight.
Just doesn't want to show up.
No. I sprained my back. There's a nerve going from my back down to my toes. Extremely painful. But here I am. Dedication, right?
I would think you're backing up the stuffs.
Yeah.
But you still golf.
No, I had to give it up. Did you guys see that?
Flares up. It's just on its own will.
I've had that before, Charlie, as a board member. Usually tends to be a pulp muscle or something.
Yeah.
Those are just devastating.
Say hello. Good.
Yeah. I'm really happy. For the last 46 years I've been working. Always stood right behind me. Never could align light. Always on the wrong side of the camera.
Gordon asked me for support and ordinance, and he was quicker on his phone. I couldn't, I couldn't call it up.
No, she's no internet.
It says no internet.
No, he has.
Okay.
Next page.
This is my work surface, so it should be working. Hello, how are you?
I'm all right. How are you?
Good.
Good to see you.
Very busy.
Excellent.
How's it going, Tom?
I'm doing all right.
Good.
He threw me off because I thought like once the meeting started, you were going to move over.
I was wondering if I should do that.
The chair almost dropped.
No, it's not. No, they're not.
I saw your, I saw your mouth drop, and I was going to ask about that.
I thought when the meeting started, you would move.
Yeah. No, that's Tom's mind. I'm good.
He threw me off.
Second page.
Yeah. That's what I remember.
I wasn't.
Tell me you.
Send me all, send me.
Yeah.
Send me email. Send me. Send me.
Well, you had new members. They would put a new member next to it.
My daughter goes to high school.
But we have. And certain people like the noise and stuff to be on certain sides. And you're not to look into this. You need my friend.
You get this fixed picture of her in your head, and like for me, it's her six-year-old picture. I still have her six-year-old picture, and I'm like.
I'll be able to find it online. I want the next two.
Give me your email. So we can just click on this.
Oh, okay.
See, that was a very politically correct answer.
Yes.
Uh-huh. They typically move me away from people because I'm too smart. Too many jokes. So we made her. Well, this last week, we were down in Wildwood to her nationals because she's a dancer right now. And so we got to see the stage. They gave really well. Their dance finished second and fourth overall. Yeah, you started to see them.
I just switched back, and now I don't have any of my.
Harry? Okay.
I'll just write it down for you.
Piggy test. Okay. It was funny. Her husband was like in terrible shape, and then she went first.
He was like tiny.
And he was also like too long. Much longer. So. At least a year or two. I mean, he had also. Two years. Yeah. It was unfortunate.
She got sick and retired.
It was one of the little. Yeah. That's cool.
Yeah, that's.
But they've just been dancing on Hawaii.
Thank you.
You have a vacation coming up, sir, right? And that you're. Just get back, right? Yeah, I guess.
But you still golfed.
No, I had to give it up. Did you guys see that?
I've had that before, certainly as a board with that. Usually tends to be a pulp muscle or something.
Say hello.
Nobody deserves more.
I'm really happy. For the last forty-six years I've been looking for it. Always stood right behind me. Never could align light. Always on the wrong side of the camera.
Gordon asked me for his four in ordinance. And he was quicker on his phone. I couldn't, I couldn't call it up. It says no internet.
Next page.
This is my work surface. So should be working. Hello, how are you?
I'm all right. How are you?
Good.
Good to see you.
Very busy.
How's it going, Tom?
I'm doing all right.
Good?
He threw me off because I thought like once the meeting started, you were gonna move over.
I was wondering if I should do that.
No, it's not that much.
I saw your, I saw your mouth drop. I was gonna ask about that.
I thought when the meeting started, we would move.
Yeah. No, that's Tom's mind. I'm good.
He threw me off.
Second page.
That's what I remember.
Tell me.
Send me an email. Send me a.
Yeah.
Send me an email. You can just.
Click blink, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, but. Shed in the back of the. Uh, how you been? Good.
Oh.
Eat great.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Just to keep you on your toes. Just to mess with beautiful.
Well, you saw that you had new members. They would put a new member next to experience. But we have. And certain people like this must hear the noise and stuff to be on certain sides. And you're not supposed to look into this.
You get this fixed picture of them in your head and like for me, it's a six-year-old picture. I still have her six-year-old picture and I'm like.
I'll be able to find it online. I want the next two.
Give me your email. So tell me, we can just click on this.
Oh, okay.
See, that was a very politically correct answer.
Yes.
They typically move me away from people because I get too smart. Get too many jokes.
Well, this last week we were down in Wildwood for Nationals because she's a dancer right now. And so we got to see the stage. They gave really well. Their dance finished second and fourth overall. On purpose. Yeah, you're starting to see them.
I just switched bags. Now I don't have any of my.
Harry? Okay. Peggy Taster.
Okay.
It was funny. Her husband was like in terrible shape and then she went first.
He was like tiny.
And he was also like too long. At least a year or two. I mean, he had also. Two years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh huh. Yeah, yeah. That's cool. The fact they've just been dancing on Hawaii.
Thank you.
You have a vacation coming up, sir, right?
And that you're.
I, yeah, so the twenty-fifth to the twenty-ninth, which is when you're switching in between, I'm gonna be in El Paso, Texas. That's not a vacation. Oh, okay. That sounds more like a vacation. Especially since I'll be spending most of my time across the border.
Swelling deformations.
Well, so there's the other.
How's it going, Tom?
Haley's the assistant. She was, she was my secretary zoning. And she's doing really well. So I put her onto the next assistant.
So what terrible stories did Dan tell you of this?
No, he said everyone was very nice and. He does have a special.
And then she'll.
First meeting was for.
The minor site. Why you? What's going on?
I have, I have very.
What are you doing?
I have very few years. So I, but I don't have. But yes, it's fifty dollars. I got three more years until I can retire.
I went to the.
At some point, probably.
I'm busy.
Sure, you don't need that.
So being just zoning officer.
Most people only go. I think I'd probably rather be director. It's a thankful job.
Sometimes I say something about my job. Put me in a warehouse every day.
They won't go to the.
One of the points for the vetting of the monuments.
Some people are used, so the rest always have to suffer.
That's what happened to me. Years ago, I was director of redeveloping. New Mayor. And I still held it in so I was very clear that I was running this in. So.
I got, um. Complaints. This is post pandemic now. Some of them that used to have outside dining. And would like to continue. And our ordinance is kind of dispirited. I know you don't, you don't take a lot of time.
The hour of seven thirty P M. Having arrived. Nora, are you ready?
Yes, you're on record.
All right, the meeting of the township of Precipity Troy Hills Planning Board Monday, July eleventh, twenty twenty-two at seven thirty P M. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with N J S A. Ten colon four dash six at SECA, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Barbario.
Here.
Mr. Didich.
Yeah.
Councilman DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Present.
Mr. Stanzial.
Here.
Ms. Veely.
Here.
Mr. Von Aken.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have with us our board planner, Mr. Weiser, our board engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our board attorney, Ms. Steinle.
All right, if we could stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united.
All right. This meeting is open to the general public. Are there any members of the public here that wish to speak to any item that is not on our agenda at the moment? Hearing and seeing none, we move on next to the resolution. We have a resolution and application number twenty-two colon five thirteen. Do I have someone willing to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mealy.
You can't, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mealy cannot make.
No, he can't make.
I thought I could vote. No.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve application twenty-two colon five thirteen. Um, J. Dish Patel, ninety-three and one oh three Troy Meadow Road, block seven sixty-three, lots nineteen point oh one, nineteen, in nineteen oh two. See variance for lot line revision.
Second, Didich.
All right.
All right, if you would call the roll, please, Nora.
Didich?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Math?
Yes.
Stanzial?
Yes.
Von Aken?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
All right. Moving along next. We have one item on our agenda tonight, an application number twenty-two colon five twenty-three Tesla. Three fifty New Road, block seven sixty-seven, lot twenty-nine point oh two. Minor site plant, see variance for the installation of Tesla-related equipment. Evening. I was glad to see at least one Tesla outside.
Hey, yes. Evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Duncan Prime from the firm of Prime and Tuvel. Uh, on behalf of the applicant, Tesla Inc., with reference to our application here this evening. Uh, would you like to do completeness first or would you like me to dive right into the board? I know there's completeness items addressed in the letter.
We're happy to do it in whatever order.
We can get right into the completeness items? Sure, and I have an introduction, but we'll be deemed complete first. How about that?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have a report dated June twentieth. Um, unfortunately, we were not able to get the completeness. Written completeness recommendation in within the forty-five day period, statutory forty-five day period. Um, so the, uh, application was deemed administratively complete. However, we did do a completeness review. And we found that, um, there are. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine items, um, that have not been submitted. They are all not applicable to this application. So, uh, we do not take exception and we did confer with the, uh, engineer's office. And none, neither of us take exception to these being not submitted, being not applicable. So we think you're. Fine, having all the information that you need. In order to make an informed decision on the application.
So you're saying, in your opinion, there are no waivers required?
Um, I mean, I guess technically, if you wish, I don't know how, uh, the board does it with, with items that are not applicable. No waivers have been requested. There are, like I said, a number of items that haven't been, um, submitted. We do not believe they're necessary to this application. Um, I have certain boards that consider that to be a waiver as, a submission waiver as well. Um, I would defer to the attorney, uh. In, as to how to treat them.
I think that the board should make a motion to have waivers for, for the submission requirements.
Yes, I think, uh, we've got, uh, what is it? Form three, items eleven, twelve, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty that would normally be anticipated to either have a waiver. Is that, is that your understanding?
It is, and it's mostly the result of the site being completely developed already. That's, that's, I mean, and we fully concur with that. Thank you.
All right. Uh, do I have a motion approving the waivers from Form three that I just mentioned?
Motion, Von Aken.
To approve.
Second.
All right, I've got, uh, uh, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Barbario.
Yes. Yeah, sorry.
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Math?
Yes.
Stanzial?
Yes.
Veely? Veely?
Oh, Veely? Yes, I thought you said Mealy. Sorry.
Von Aken?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
All right. So we have agreed with your waivers and if you could.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the property that is the subject of tonight's application, I think the board's familiar with it. It is located at three fifty New Road at the intersection of Edwards Road, also known as block seven sixty-seven, lot twenty-nine point oh two on your tax map. Uh, it's the site of the existing Wawa convenience store, uh, with the sale of fuel and the existing Tesla charging stations on site. For benefit of this board, uh, I want to go through a little bit of the history here on the site because we have not been before you. Uh, this Wawa was approved in twenty-ten. Uh, I was fortunate enough to represent Wawa at the time. It was approved by Use Variants, uh, back in twenty-ten at the zoning board. Uh, the site, uh, excuse me, the use was not a permitted use at the time, so we came in and got our Use Variance back then. Uh, in twenty sixteen, we returned for Wawa to add the parking that's there now, the extra parking, the thirteen additional spaces. Uh, what I'll call in the rear for the side, depending on how you look at it. Uh, we also came back, Tesla came back in twenty eighteen to the zoning board to add the eight Tesla charging stations that are already out there on site now. Did not require Use Variance for the Tesla at the time, but they kept us, your town kept us at the zoning board because that's where we were originally, uh, approved. Since twenty eighteen, the regulatory climate in New Jersey has changed a bit. I'm not sure how much this board's aware, but in twenty twenty-one, last year. Uh, Governor Murphy signed into law Bill S. Three-two-two-three, which I'll, I'll bore you, I won't bore you with too many of the details, but it was a landmark bill for E V charging. It essentially streamlined the permitting process, uh, for E V charging uses and made the use itself. An accessory permitted use in every zone in zoning. So with that bill, we're permitted use. That's why we're now here at the planning board. Um, the one item or a couple of items where, uh, we're not protected here tonight is that to be a permitted use to go get your permits and, and start charging. You cannot have any bulk variance request. You have to be fully conforming to your township ordinance. Um, there are a couple of items in the ordinance, uh, that was adopted for these E V charging stations that we do not meet. We're gonna go through them in testimony. Uh, we have a couple of setback variances based on where the charging equipment is placed. And there are a couple of items in the model ordinance that was drafted by the state and adopted by your town in December, uh, that we don't meet either, and you'll hear why. Mostly because of Tesla's color and branding. There are certain standards in that model ordinance that we prefer not to meet. We're asking for the relief. Uh, with that background, I'd like to introduce, I have two witnesses. I do have a Tesla rep and I also have a rep from Dewberry, our civil engineer. Uh, we have some exhibits to present. Like swear them at the same time or I can swear them separately, however you'd like.
Well, turn to our attorney, however she would like.
Who, who will be? We can just present them in order.
All right.
There's not gonna be overlap.
I've got our Tesla rep first and Dave, actually, if you don't mind, I'll swear them in because I may, I may go to both. Dave, let's stand up and raise your right hand.
Please raise your right hand. Uh, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All right, and please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your business address for, um, the board.
David Revette.
Do you have the, wait, wait, do you have a microphone there? We need to get it on the record.
David Revette, R.E.V.E.T.T.E., Dewberry Engineers, uh, six hundred Parsippany Road, Parsippany, New Jersey.
And what, you'll be providing engineering testimony?
That's correct.
Could you please provide the board with your qualifications and background and if you presented before the board before?
Yes. Um, I graduated in twenty-twelve with a civil engineering degree from Clarkson University. I am, uh, I'm a New Jersey professional engineer and my license is current. Um, I have been practicing civil engineering for the past decade. Um, I've been doing these supercharger stations all around New Jersey and the, the United States for the past four or five years now.
Okay. Does the board accept those qualifications? Have any questions?
Any questions? No, hearing and seeing none. I, I don't see any questions. I think that sounds like you're accepted.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Franz Gertis, uh, senior design manager at Tesla. Uh, business address twenty-seven nineteen Columbus Avenue, Belmore, New York, one-one-seven-one-oh.
Please spell your last name.
G.E.R. D. As in David, E.S.
Yeah, we'll be presenting Mr. Gertis as a back witness, not an expert.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Gertis, I gave a very brief overview of what we're doing here or why we're here. Uh, so we have eight charging stations out on site. Uh, what are we, what are we proposing to do and why do we need more?
Uh, so right now, as Duncan said, we have eight existing, uh, DC fast chargers. We are looking to add four more Tesla DC fast chargers as well as two E V Go fast chargers. Um, the use in the area is growing and we're looking to meet that demand.
Thank you. Any change from the operation that the board sees out there today, meaning that there's Tesla charging stations out there now? Will these be wildly different anyway?
No.
So we can expect much of the same?
Yes.
Usually offer a little bit more in detail testimony, but we do have an operating charging station out there. The board can see how it works. I'm sure you've been there. We can answer any more questions as we go, or if you have them now. Uh, if not, I'd like to dive into Mr. Revette's testimony on where this is going and how it's gonna work.
Just one question, if I may. You mentioned two different types of charging stations. What were they?
Tesla and E V Go is another brand.
Oh, that's a different manufacturer.
Yes.
And what are the differences between Tesla and E V Go or what will the differences that the board see out there?
Uh, currently, the Tesla chargers only charge Teslas. E V Go will be open to all sorts of, uh, electric vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew?
Um, to follow up on the nomenclature, I know you've been referring to enabled and dedicated.
Yes.
Could you explain that a little bit?
Uh, dedicated stall is only for E V charging. So if you're parking there, it should only be for E V charging. Enable means anybody who's out there generally.
And by anybody, we mean anybody meaning a.
Combustible engines, like.
Someone, a Wawa customer.
Yep.
Okay, and they're all, um, electric vehicle charging stations. They're, none of them are make-ready. They're all. Equipment will, when construction begins, they all will be operating as charging stations.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm good to have Mr. Gertis right here for questions. I know you. Sure. With some as we go, but I want to present, uh, Dave, let's get, uh, A one marked. Is that an aerial? All right, we'll call this A one, Dave. A one.
And what is A one?
Steak sauce.
Delicious.
Just, I just want to announce that, that if there are any members of the public that have questions of these witnesses, we're gonna have a question time later.
I'm just getting through the testimony. I know a lot.
Right.
Great, uh, yeah, A one aerial site plan.
Today's date?
Today's date.
Prepared by your office?
Yes. Thank you. And this is just to show, I'll, I'll show the site plan itself, um, without the aerial, but just to show the aerial to, to make sure everyone's aware of the site. Um, at the corner, the, the charging station itself is at the corner of New Road and Edward, Edward Road. Um, the Wawa station itself on the northeast side. Um, central to the site is the, uh, gas pumps and then on the western, southwestern side is, uh, the existing, um, Tesla station and the proposed Tesla's Tesla equipment and E V Go. So I don't know if we wanna, the, these are the, the plans that everyone has. I don't know if we wanna mark those as a. I tend to do it, Dave. We're presenting it, uh, for during the hearings. So we'll call it A two. And it's a sheet of the site plan that was submitted already? Yes, this is Z three of the site plan that was submitted. Uh, again, just basically the same thing without the aerial. Um, just, uh. I noticed Franz said that there's two E V Go stations. There's actually gonna be four stalls, four stalls worth of charging, um, for the E V Go stations. So Dave, to be, just to be clear for the record, there are eight existing charging stations on site. After tonight's hopeful approval, there'll be how many? Sixteen. Sixteen. Thank you. Any questions on the, on the plan, the site themselves, where the entrances are or? So it's sixteen, uh, charging units and that's sixteen parking spots also? Yes. Okay. And I can show that in a more detailed plan. Thank you.
When were the, the first charging stations put in?
Twenty-six, uh, excuse me, twenty eighteen they were.
So in, uh, four years, you're doubling capacity?
Some are ours and some are E V Go. Don't forget, we're getting approval for them as well tonight.
Yeah, but I'm saying in four years, the capacity now is doubled.
That's correct.
So what is the forward projections four more years from now?
I'm gonna turn that to someone who hopefully knows more than I do.
We are growing exponentially. E V adoption is taking over. Europe, you can see that the trends are far more leaning towards like the usual. I can't say that we'll double again in four years, but it is trending that way. And we wouldn't be looking to put.
Nora, are you picking that up?
Yeah, he's got.
I wouldn't expect to put more at this specific, uh, particular Wawa, but in the area.
Yeah, I mean, just from a general town planning perspective. I can see it running out of capacity.
Sure.
At that rate.
All right, Dave.
Um, actually, sorry, another question.
Sure.
Is, isn't, uh, is the air station still gonna be there or is it being moved or abandoned?
Uh, the air station, so we are keeping that one stall as the air station stall is not, that's not moving. Um, there is one, there's additional.
There's two air stations now.
This one is, um. I have to double check on our other plan where we're placing that or if we're taking it out. I, I, sorry, I have to double check on this one. This, this.
So there's gonna be one air station at least?
Well, yes.
Okay. Um, and.
Yeah.
I, I noticed the cross hatching. Is one of those an ADA spot? Or there's like, there's a hatched area?
Yeah, I'll get into that in the, in the detailed plan.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll let you get there, sorry.
Yep. Okay, so I'll jump to Z four. We'll mark this A three, Dave. Okay. And it's Z four of the site plan set that was originally submitted, correct? That's right. With no change? No change. This is just to show the existing conditions. Um, these are the eight parking stalls for Tesla. Uh, just to note, as, as they are existing, um, there are two dedicated Tesla stalls, meaning dedicated signage saying, hey, only if you're in a Tesla vehicle. That, those are being removed and all eight or all twelve proposed are gonna be enabled for the Tesla. Two of the, um, E V Go will be dedicated, but I'll get into that on the next sheet. Um, so as you can see, there is one stall that's eleven feet wide with a five-foot drive aisle, um, for accessibility, um, to, to the charge posts itself. And then there are eight, uh, charge posts in this area. The equipment, there's a, um, D C P N L utility transformer. There is just a general electric equipment, electrical equipment and the Tesla, uh, charging equipment. Or not charging equipment, sorry, but the rectifier equipment here on, uh, pads.
Another question. So what percentage of the chargers are, so it looks like seventy-five percent is gonna be Tesla, twenty-five percent other?
Yes, yep.
And Tesla can charge in all of them?
Yes, that, that's correct.
But if you have like a Chevy Silverado E V, you can't charge.
There'll be in the other four.
So what data did you pull that seventy-five percent of the vehicles in the neighborhood are only Tesla and about twenty-five percent are other?
I wouldn't say we pulled that data, but seventy percent of the E Vs in America are Tesla. Um, and we're right now moving towards being enabled for all.
What's the timeline on that?
I don't have. I don't have a date, but it is near term. We're currently testing in Europe and we are making heavy right now. So it's very near term.
Yeah, I mean, because I just look at the shift that, you know, America is being forced into right now, right? And that, that, that number, you know, especially given the fact that the starting price of the Tesla is what, $60,000?
A little bit south, yeah.
Okay. And then there's going to be lower cost electric vehicles. Having 75% of your chargers Tesla only would be problematic. So I would, I guess, me, you know, living in the town would probably want to understand when those charging stations could be for all.
I just want to be clear too, we're improving the condition out there. Right now it's 100% Tesla.
Yeah, no, no, I get it. Yep.
Yeah, we, we're not looking to have it proprietary or any way. We work with all the other EV charging companies and like I said, it is very near term. I just don't have that date.
Okay. Be cool to have it. I mean, just to understand that.
Definitely. We all want it.
Okay. Any questions just on what's existing out there? I can show the proposed plan next.
Yep. Call this A4.
Okay. A4, this is Z5, equipment and parking plan, same site plan. So as you can see, the existing site is staying as is, the existing chargers and the charging equipment are staying as is. There's modifications to the existing utility transformer and the, some of the electrical equipment needs to be increased to provide two different services for EV Go and to continue to feed Tesla. Tesla's equipment is also, they're adding one rectifier cabinet, just pad mounted, a cabinet. It'll be slightly different than existing, just a newer version of the existing cabinets and off to the side here. The four Tesla stations, just taking those next four stalls. So there will be 12 total. They'll still have this accessibility stall here at what they're calling four feet. And the rest, I mean, that's, you know, they're, they're going to look, the charge posts themselves are going to look the same as, as they are existing out there.
You say the same, Dave, they're going to match, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
On the EV Go side, they'll come from this transformer, go to a pad mounted equipment, similar, similar idea of equipment, doing the same type of things, distribution, rectifying DC to DC at this location here. There's some proposed landscaping here. So this, okay, here we go. This relocated air pump was, it was here. It's being pushed just to the end of the stall. I could flip back and forth to kind of give everyone a better idea. Where it was before. It was here as a kind of a, it would be on the passenger side if you were to pull into it. It's being shifted to the side here. We are removing some of this curb to provide some additional parking here, just some additional asphalted area to, to expand that to allow for some accessibility and additional parking. So to answer your question, there's an eight-foot accessibility aisle here at one of the chargers. This provides the vehicle to pull in here and grab the charger in this location here.
So if I could just expand on my question earlier, so this is a new ADA spot, not a replacement for an existing one?
That's correct. There's still...
So this is ADA specifically for the chargers, not for the store?
That's correct. It feeds, it feeds, it gives accessibility to the charger itself.
Okay. Thank you.
The proposed EV Go equipment, like I said, four, four charge posts. Two of them will be marked with EV charging only. That's your two dedicated stalls. There'll be signage as well. So those are the two dedicated stalls as we discussed. All the rest are enabled.
Just to be very clear for the board again, the two dedicated are for dedicated for charging, no Wawa customer unless they're driving an electric car. That's correct.
That's the idea.
All the other ones are shared.
So I mean, it's really, the plan in a nutshell, I can, I can get into any, you know, specifics. There will be, I guess, one thing I, I looked over was ballers protection at that of the equipment. There'll be proposed ballers to make sure no vehicle strikes to the electrical equipment. If there's questions just generally about the equipment, but as I said, there, it's really the same equipment that's already there. The new, the new charge poster is a little bit more powerful.
And Dave, what does the new proposal do to the setbacks? We need a variance, correct?
That's correct. So the setback on this New Road side is encroached upon due to the chargers themselves more than, more so than it was before.
And what was the existing setback variance and we're exacerbating it to what?
Yep. Check my notes. So the new road existing was 17 feet, proposed is 2.8 feet. It was non-conforming as, as it stood. This is making it less conforming. And then that's, so that's the physical, that's, I think, I believe the only physical variance. The rest are based on the EV.
Is there any effect on the impervious? Because you're, you're widening one of the...
Slight increase, yeah, because of this, this area here being wide to, to allow for. It's very, it's very minimal. There's also additional just concrete pads. So it, there is an increase. It's, it's minimal.
Dave, the zone allows us 70%, correct?
Impervious, yes. Zone allows 70. As existing, it's 60.91%. As proposed, it's 61.1%.
Okay. Just, just making sure you don't need another variance.
Check that. Thank you. Are there any questions as related to the design? We'll get into the variances for the model ordinance.
Going back to the air station and the accessible EV Go station there. Do you see any conflict with movements of someone putting air in their tire versus someone having the EV charger going in that accessible space?
So as long as they use the stall as it's, they're exposed to, they pull in or they back in, no. I'm sure everyone's seen it though. You know, you could go in at an angle or, you know.
Essentially, what I'm seeing there is that, that first number one EV Go station, half of it is hatched, the other half is unhatched. That is, that 16-foot wide stall is the accessible stall.
Correct. So you've got, yeah, this stall here and additionally...
That is one accessible stall.
Right.
Okay. And we noted on our letter that the air, the, the traditional air station pump should be nine feet instead of seven. I think that was just a typo on some part there. It's listed as eight. It should be nine.
Okay, we can confirm that.
I see you're relocating, replacing the transformer that's out there. Does that transformer also serve the building?
No, this is, it currently is dedicated to Tesla only. It will be replaced, increased in size, and it'll feed EV Go and...
So by the time you're taking it out, replacing the buildings...
Everything, everything will be up other than the Tesla station. And construction, three to four weeks max.
And then as far as the signage, and I was having, I was really wrestling with the enabled and dedicated, but it makes perfect sense that any car, combustion engine or other can park in the ones marked enabled. Now, the Tesla signs don't really suggest that, but I understand that they, they don't say it's, it's for EV charging only. There, is there any signage for the ones on, on the left there, the EV Go stations?
Yeah, I know.
The two that are not listed as dedicated or have the pavement markings? What kind of signage is going on those other two, including accessible signage?
So this is the nine of the site plan drawings? Eight, five?
Yeah, eight, five.
So those dedicated stalls at EV Go will have striping on the stall itself saying EV, EV charging only, just your typical, you know, electric vehicle plug painted and they'll have signage, EV Go, fast charging only, vehicle must be charging, vacate stall when complete. So that's the dedicated signage that'll be at those two stalls.
So my question was the enabled only, the non-dedicated, what kind of signage will you have for those other two stalls?
I don't know that they will. We don't, I don't know that. We can confirm.
So there's no signage? That's what I'm trying to figure out, is there any signage on the other two stalls?
How would somebody know what? How would you know that you could park there?
Right. So we are proposing signs that, that can be included in a, in a resolution drawing. We'll show what signs they say or, and what they say. Generally, it's...
I confirm, they did, they said they are having a micro...
Okay. Okay.
We will include an additional sign sheet that shows that.
And going back to the Tesla parking, I do see that it says, I guess it says Tesla, 15-minute parking and then 15-minute general parking or general parking.
Right. I can show that several. This is Z6, I'll make this A6.
And as part of this application, Dave, all of them will be that sign, right? The 15-minute general parking.
That's correct. So this is Tesla, 15-minute general parking, 12 by 18-inch typical sign. That'll be at each one of the Tesla stalls.
So what does the, what will the EV Go enabled parking set generally?
That's what we're trying to find out. We're bringing this application on behalf of us and them. I thought we had all their information and that's a good question. We don't have that. I can only assume it's something general like ours. If there's something that needs to be on there, that's part of the condition, we'd be willing to accept it, but we don't have it. We'll have to submit it as part of resolution lines.
Well, I think if it's similar to this, it's a 15-minute EV parking or 15-minute general parking.
It would have the same intent. General, general parking, it wouldn't, you know, sit.
And that's, if that's a condition, that's fine.
And I think that clarifies a little bit. It's EV or general, I think, is my opinion. We had a comment on here, if you can provide testimony with regard to any changes or negative impacts to site distance, either from Edwards Road intersection or from the exiting driveways. Can you give some testimony on site distance?
So I did print some photos, hoping that will give good insight, but I will just go back to the site plan to just show, make that clear. So this is back to aerial site plan and A1. So the curb line here, obviously we didn't show the street, full street, but our proposed equipment is well, well back. This, it's well back from Edwards Road and there really, as you're turning right from New Road on Edwards, there would be no issues. As you're turning left here in this lane here, there would be no issues in, in the site there. I can show some, some photos just of the existing site, which can kind of give some insight. Might, so I'll mark these photos A7.
And these photos are, were they taken by you or your office, Dave?
I have been to the site. I, I pulled these from Google or Street View. So this is a shot kind of from the corner, looking at the site itself. You can see here, this is the transformer in the background. This is the Tesla equipment, minor frame with that setback here. The proposed EV Go equipment would be in this area here. In the second photo, you can see, again, from that similar area at the corner, looking down towards the Tesla stations themselves, there is a good setback on that Edwards Road And this wouldn't show much on the site triangle, but just the existing site itself.
Any comments, Mr. Meth?
None.
I'm just teasing.
But yeah, so your test one is no, there's no adverse impact regarding right, right-hand turns out of Edwards?
Yes. Right-hand turns out of Edwards. You mean left-hand?
Yeah. No, if the person's got to be looking to the left, he's making a right out.
Okay, yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah, no, there, there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be setback triangle issues with that.
Right. Thank you.
Ms. Feely, you had some...
Yes, I had two questions. One, my understanding of the EV car charging stations, only because I'm the one that reviewed the plan on the zoning officer, is it normal for the parking spaces to be open to the public? I thought they're normally just for charging and that you wouldn't want the Wawa customers parking in it because at lunchtime and you pulled in, what if all the spaces were filled? I was surprised that they're available to, to both.
I would say it is normal. Wawa won't allow more than two dedicated for EV charging as it is.
Okay. That, because when you, when you submitted the application originally to zoning, I was kind of shocked because it seemed to take up a lot of the parking spaces and I know it's a very busy location. So that's why the spaces can be both and most people aren't going to be more there in the space more than 10 to 15 minutes. Okay. Second question, I know that a lot of these locations, we're getting complaints about if someone's pulling up to the site and it's not working. They're, they're calling, you know, zoning or housing as to have enforced. Do these, I know when we originally submitted, we were talking about a telephone number or something that they could call. I didn't see that on the signage. Is there like a number where somebody can call?
We're going to touch on that in a sec. It's a requirement under the model ordinance, which you, which the town adopted. So we are, we're asking for a variance slightly on that, but I'll, we'll explain why and say.
And the colors too, I remember that was, okay. Yeah, those were the things that...
There are four, technically four variances that we need from the model.
Thank you.
Background on your question though, when a Tesla charging post is down, HQ finds out right away that we have communication back so we know and get the service.
Okay. And they block off the space so that people don't like pull into it? Oh, okay, they fix it right away. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Von Akken?
Yes, I, I noticed the EV only dedicated spots are, spots that are also closest to the Wawa. Could we move those spots to the ones that are farthest away from the Wawa instead?
Well, we're, we decided to do dedicated for the EV Go chargers because anybody charging them currently. So it's most advantageous basically to have that, the, you know, any EV vehicle.
Okay. It does also make it feel like to the customers as if it's more prohibited to, to be in the EV zone though, even if it's not explicitly stated.
See, our preference to leave it. We'd have to go back to Wawa probably, flip it.
Okay. Well, I'll just leave that for the rest of my board members to help consider.
Sure.
The, the other question has to do with plantings around all that electrical equipment. I know right now it seems a little bit bare. We can see some of the bracing equipment and such from New Road. Can we do something more to, to block some of that out with some kind of plantings?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see an issue with adding, adding some tall evergreen landscaping or something to match what's on site.
And it seems like you, you will have plenty of room to account for that with the sightlines as well, so. All right. That's, those are my questions, sir.
Okay. So you'd, you would agree to work with the town forester on some sort of buffering planting that would not interfere with the sightline, would not interfere with any of the operations or access to the operation, just make it look nice?
As long, yes, as long as it didn't interfere with the sightlines or our equipment, yes.
Okay. So you, you just work with the township professionals on something?
As part of resolution lines.
Okay. Good. Any, any questions down here? Hearing and seeing none?
One, yeah, the one last...
My name is Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, just one question. Mr. Vett, you talked about the setback for New Road and that it had been a variance condition at seventeen feet. Now it's at two point eight. We measured the setback for Edwards Road at thirty five point nine feet, which is also a variance condition. Was that variance previously granted?
It was a variance previously granted. I don't know if it's thirty five point nine at all.
Do say, see that it's existing non-conforming, existing at thirty eight point two feet.
It's slightly exaggerated.
And proposed at thirty, thirty five point eight feet. Yep.
Okay. So we would ask that to be.
We put that in our legal notice as well.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No.
Thanks, Dave. The, the last item, I touched on the bill earlier that was passed. The DCA took that bill and did a model ordinance, which I referred to. The town adopted that model ordinance and in typical New Jersey fashion, instead of just permitting the charging stations and making them accessory permitted everywhere, they passed a whole bunch of additional regulations on how they should look, what signage they should be, what color they should be, what needs to be posted on the signs. It's all listed in the, in the ordinance, which is now part of your land use ordinance. That's overall ninety five percent great for us, but five percent problematic because of a few things we can't meet. One of them, for instance, as brought up, is that all stalls have to be for charging only. Can't share them. Doesn't make any sense, but we do need a variance from that to allow the shared parking with Wawa. Number two is that the EV SE shall be identified by green painted pavement curb markings, green painted charging pictograph symbol and appropriate green sign. Obviously Tesla, it's, their green's not our color. We prefer to keep our, our brand, our red, white and blue. Number three is that there are publicly, publicly accessible EV SE geographic location, date of installation, equipment type and model and owner contact info posted. We have all that information available. It's in our app. All of our drivers can pull up the app and get all of that information instead of posting a huge sign out there, cluttering the site. It's all readily available in our, in our app. I think EV Go does post a hotline or a number on their signage, which is good, although it's in their app or not, but they do post the signage, so we don't need the variance for them. But for us, we'd prefer to keep it where all of our customers are used to seeing it. And I think I just hit them off.
There, there is one more. There is.
Twenty four hour contact.
Yes. Actually, that wasn't the one that I was wearing. But you hit that, hit that one and then I'll hit, I'll get.
Twenty four hour on-call contact is the number that I mentioned. That's, that's on the EV Go sign. It's not on ours. It's, it's found in our app.
The one that, that I was going to hit and this almost seems self-explanatory, but there's a requirement that the charging station shall always be maintained.
Oh, yes, yes. We will maintain it always.
Thank you.
I'm happy to provide some more testimony to that. I just, I read it off essentially, but I can, I have Mr. Gertis here to like hear some, some testimony to it, but it's pretty self-explanatory why we need that relief.
I think from my end.
Sure.
Just to reiterate my concern, just knowing, you know, the world and the market.
Sure.
Four years from now, you know, Tesla's not going to have a seventy percent market share. And I think that, you know, not understanding a timeline from when all of those charging stations will be accessible to every vehicle would really make that station useless if, you know, you had now a low cost thirty thousand dollar EV vehicle come in the market and there's only, you know, two charging stations that they can use at that facility. So I would really want to understand what your timeline is and what, what does it actually take to overhaul the other machines so that they can, you know, is it like a big lift or is it changing out a connector?
Mr. Gertis, they do it currently in Europe, correct?
Yes.
So why wouldn't we do it now? I mean, given that the market's going to change.
We, we've been using Europe as a test case for some, some number of months because we don't want to just say, hey, everybody can charge here now and then it messes up the experience for all the customers, right? Like it has to be, there has to be understanding for how non-Tesla.
Well, it sounds like they, it's messing up the experience for Tesla's customer.
No, because if you drive an E-tron and you don't know how to use a Tesla supercharger, then your experience won't be good.
It's different. They're different.
Yeah. Right now with the Tesla, you just pull up, plug in and like then put it back in the, that's all you have to do. It's not going to be the same experience for a non-Tesla, so we need to make sure it's an optimal experience for those customers as well.
I, I would go to say to the board right now, I would, I would be concerned with seventy five percent of the charging stations being for Tesla only because in four years from now, I think it'll be problematic if there's not a clear path to when that would be available to all.
But that would be their choice to come back and change that. They've already been back to the four, four times now, so they could come back again if they're.
Tesla's paying for this.
No, understood.
You know, and they're going to make it, make it compatible. And the problem, as I understand it, is the handshake so that they know who to bill.
That's, that is the reality. The chair's correct.
You know, you, you don't, you don't pay the bill at the station. You just plug it in and the bill goes to the ether somewhere.
It's also the connector. In Europe, they have regulations, everybody has the same connector. So that was easy for us to do the test case there.
Yeah.
What else have you got?
That concludes our presentation. Be happy to answer any questions from you or the professionals or the public, if anyone's here.
Okay. There's, there any questions?
Chairman, yeah. First question for our professionals and the board maybe. Is there a requirement for, if there are N number of charging stations, is there a requirement for general parking as well? That if there are ten charging stations, there should be, I don't know, five general parking?
Well.
Any condition like that?
The, the, the Wawa itself, with the conditions that are there now, did receive approvals and this predated me on the board, but I would imagine it either conforms or they got relief for that. There are, there is a formula as part of the state's model ordinance as to how many of the total parking requirement can be or must be electric vehicle charging stations. So it's all prescribed either by local ordinance for the use, for, for the overall use or by the state's model ordinance for the electric vehicle charging station.
So in this case, even though it looks like heavily charging station parking lot, parking spaces, is it okay or?
If it helps, there are fifty, this, this use, the Wawa use would require fifty four parking spaces. We have sixty nine on site.
Okay.
As is.
Mr. Prime, is that, those sixty nine, that doesn't include the, the park, the gas pumps sites, does it? Just, you have sixty nine dedicated spots?
We came and got.
Okay.
And I just want to add, the ordinance is very new, but as I, as I read it, each EV charging station counts for two traditional parking spaces.
At, at ten percent cap. I can only do that up to ten percent.
A ten percent cap.
Yes.
So again, it's written to kind of promote.
It is.
So if a location comes in with, a new, a different location, maybe it comes in with fifteen, fifty parking spots and they want to convert all of them, that won't work, right?
It won't work.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions by members of the board or our professionals?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Von Aken?
Yes. So regarding the contact information, I think you said that you'd be providing that through your app for the Tesla stations and you'd prefer not to have any signage that, that gave indication. And I think that, that's exactly what Ms. Veely was looking for. Something that the customers could have right in front of them that would tell them.
So it's easily accessible. Rate when you, yeah, rate when you, for the Tesla drivers, rate when you own the app that's there. For the EV Go, they're going to put it on the sign.
See, if we give you the variance right now though, you won't, you're, you might not have to include that in the future when you make changes. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're providing that information. I think that should be on your signage. Seems like your signage is pretty open. You have some space to put it, even if it's a QR code that takes you someplace so that you don't have to worry about changing phone numbers or something. But something for the customers to, to reach out to somebody other than our town in case they have an issue. And then the, the second question is about colors and branding.
Sure.
Not wanting to go with the green on pavement. I, I, you know, I get that Tesla probably wants to do its branding. You have adequate space to do that on the signage. Is it necessary to also do it on the pavement as well though? To ensure that, you know, you're talking about not doing the green, not doing the symbol that helps our customers know where to go.
And there's, there's no, no.
Oh, you have a Tesla sign. Oh, so there's no pavement.
No. We don't want to have a marked green. We just want to leave it.
Dedicated have white instead of the green? Is that what my understanding is?
Right.
So that's, that's those two only, those are the only ones that will have painting on the ground. All the other ones will just have a white stripe, just, just as.
So it'll look like normal parking?
Right.
And actually that helps your, your general parking people feel as if they're not being excluded from those spots. Okay. All right. Thank you for answering the question.
Thank you, Brad.
Any other questions? Our professionals have any questions? Are the members of the public have questions of this, these witnesses at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
We conclude our presentation. We're happy to come back and obviously the station's doing well here, so we're, we're excited to expand. Thank you.
All right. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? Hearing and seeing none. In favor of this application? Hearing and seeing none. I close the evidentiary portion of the case this time. Is there any need for a discussion or do I hear a motion?
I just have one comment. I wanted to go through the agreed conditions so far.
Yes.
That the applicant will provide a sheet with signs for the enabled space, or a signage sheet with the descriptions of all the signs as a condition, including the enabled spaces. And the applicant agreed that they will add tall landscaping and work with the township forester to improve landscaping on the site in the area of the charging stations and equipment.
It'll just be appropriate buffering landscaping.
Provided it didn't interfere with our.
Right.
Equipment or the sightlines.
Yeah. All right. And then there was an, the applicant agreed to the maintenance requirement in the EV ordinance that the equipment will always be maintained.
Yes.
Those were my notes. If there is anything else, I don't think so.
All right. Is there somebody willing to make a motion?
Real quick, so unless I missed that, did we add the condition for adding something on the charging station for contact?
We did not, they did not agree to it. We did not demand it. And if you don't like the application because of that, that's your, that can affect your vote. Do I have a volunteer to move the motion with the agreed items that were just enumerated?
I'm sorry, one more thought. There is the pointing out of the nine foot space for the air pump. Should that be included in the conditions as well or?
If you're making a, a motion.
I'm not making a motion. I'm just clarifying.
Okay.
If that condition should have been included. Sorry for going at.
Can I clarify that? It's, as long as the condition is, it's in, it's in our letter.
Okay.
So as long as the, as a condition, the letter has to be compliant.
That's fine.
All right. Do I have a motion approving of this application at this?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr.?
I moved the motion to approve application number two, two, colon, five, two, three, Tesla Inc., minor site plan with C variance relief, three fifteen Euro block, seven six seven lot, twenty nine point oh two, with noted conditions.
With noted conditions. So I hear a second.
Second, Von Aken.
Nora, would you call a roll, please?
Barbario.
Yes.
Didich.
Yes.
Di Piero.
Yes.
Meili.
Yes.
Met.
Yes.
Denziel.
No.
Veely.
Yes.
Von Aken.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Always a pleasure coming up here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have other items on our agenda that we have to work diligently through the darkness of the night tonight, or at least until we decide to leave. We have our master plan consistency, consistency review and we have an ordinance twenty two nineteen, or twenty twenty two dash nineteen amending the zoning ordinance to permit LCOC communities. How would we like to approach these? We want to do the ordinance first?
Well, they're both.
They're both.
It, it's, the consistency review is for the ordinance.
Ah, yes, you're right. I'm sorry. You want to give us an explanation of what?
Yes. Everybody should have a copy of this draft ordinance that we put together. There has been a proposal to do what has been termed, and let me get to the, a limited continuum of care community in the ROL zone. The limited continuum care community, abbreviation LCOC, is a facility which is licensed by the state's Department of Health, combining apartment style, independent living residences and assisted living residences. Both are defined in this ordinance in a home-like environment with a single, within a single building and providing for a variety of continuum of care services, typical of such residents, as well as acute care services. What this effectively does is creates a definition for a senior living community that is both independent living as well as assisted living with various types of amenities that might be appropriate to those kind of communities, as well as allowing for acute care services, which we defined in here as, bear with me, that would be under A, right? The level of attention of services an individual receives while recovering from an injury, illness or surgery upon hospital discharge, but not rising to the level of long-term care such as, but not limited to hospice, oxygen treatment, wound care, physical therapy and similar. So this is not intended as a nursing home. It's sort of a transitional use while someone recovers from a hospitalization or an accident. The way it was described to the township was that it is a high-end or a higher end facility that combines again assisted living with independent living for residents who would wish to take advantage of those services. If there are no questions about the ordinance itself, or, or, let me take a step back. I'm able to answer questions about the ordinance itself. If that's, if there are no such questions, we are required as part of the municipal land use law to make a determination of consistency with the master plan. That will then go to the governing body when they adopt the ordinance upon second reading. So that's where we are. So.
Yeah. So this would apply as a conditional use for all of the ROL zones?
ROL zones, yes.
So this is in an overlay zone for specific lot? This is all our.
All of the R O.
Okay.
So Stuart, just quick, I'm sorry, were you finished, John?
Yes.
Okay, Stuart, just, so just to sum up what we're being asked to do right now. We're being asked if this new, this one new use, limited continuum of care is consistent with the master plan in areas which already permit both independent living and assisted living, correct?
I would actually stop it with your first clause. You're being asked if it's consistent with the master plan as presented in the ROL, in the ROL zone. In terms of what your second clause was, which was in areas that already permit assisted living and independent living, that's not part of what this is.
Okay. Because they're in the, so I was going to, the ordinance only really changes. All right. Forget what I asked.
What we do is we have added a use, right now there is a conditional use in the RLL zone for hotels.
Okay.
We added a conditional use for this limited continuing of, continuum of care use. And the, as a conditional use with the conditions being laid out in this ordinance itself.
Okay. So the, the fact that there's all these definitions here for all these different types of healthcare uses, that was just incidental?
I took the opportunity to add these because they're not in our ordinance or if they are in our ordinance, they're inconsistent with a, a lot of research that I did with the Department of Aging and HUD related definitions. So we went through and made sure, we took this opportunity to go through and make sure that our ordinance is consistent with higher law.
Okay. So in other words, the, just because they're all mentioned here doesn't mean it's a proposal to actually permit them in the zone.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, this LCOC, is this for affordable housing? Is this designed for affordable housing?
It, I, I, I'm, it is not, but there, it, the, to the, I'm not your affordable housing. It, I, I, I'm, it is not, but there, it, the, to the ex, I'm not your affordable housing planner. So this was not presented as an affordable housing project. To the extent that your regulations for, for us in the township require some percentage of affordable housing, that would have to be included uh, because it's part of your ordinance, but it's not part of this ordinance.
Well, and this is also not a presentation of a project. It's a change of the zoning, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Any project will still have to come to us for site plan approval.
But I had the impression that LCOC was aimed at affordable housing.
No, it's, it's aimed at.
I don't think any of it.
It's aimed at senior care, different levels of senior care.
Senior care.
The definition in here is a good definition. And I don't know what page that is, but page four has the definition of limited continuum of care. It's a facility which is licensed by the New Jersey Department of Health that combines multiple uses. It's not affordable housing.
Okay.
Right? And that definition is great. It says it all. Right there. That's what helped me.
Thank you.
I, I was gonna ask your opinion, Jennifer.
Yeah, I, um, I had gotten it early on before it went to the board and looked at it and was struggling because of all the definitions. I was kind of lost. And then when I finally got to that definition, it just narrowed it down. This is a specific facility that has multiple uses combined in it. You don't see it, but it's becoming a common thing in areas where they're combining this, you know, memory care and assisted living into a combination location. So it is something that Parsippany doesn't have that is, is, is moving towards coming into.
No, my, my mother was in a Sunrise that, that had a, a longer list of things that they did than my mother-in-law did when she went to Sunrise ten years before, so.
Right, yeah, they're having more and more. So this, we don't have this anywhere in the ordinance, so.
So a question here is, um, this is now going to permit people to not, not officially, but effectively reside in this zone then?
Oh, it's officially. I mean, it, it is a residential facility. It is a, um, a living facility, and it will allow people to start off, um, it, it's, you may have heard the phrase age in place, and that takes you all the way to the end.
Okay.
Um, this is limited. It will not be a nursing home. At some point, if an individual gets beyond what assisted living is, then they will have to go to a different facility. Um, but the concept is you, you start off independent living, and if you begin to need help as you age, that you won't have to move out of the facility.
Okay. I guess my, the direction for my concern actually is, is more with uh, some of the other businesses that are in the area are production facilities potentially, that, or at least that are in these zones. Uh, many of, some of them are production sites, uh, potentially dealing with chemicals. If there's a fire in the area, what happens to the fumes and things like that of people that are living nearby? What kind of evacuation procedures will be needed?
I think that's a question, and I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, that, that's, that's the whole of it.
I think that's the question for site plan.
Okay.
And it's a question for, um, the construction office and our EMS people. Um, I mean frankly, it's no different, depending on how the wind blows, whether it's this facility that is impacted or surrounding residential facilities just across the street.
Yeah.
Um, or single-family homes just across the street. Um, so I, I think that's a very valid question. Um, it's just not a question for this evening.
Was there discussion of putting it in other zones also?
That's, yeah.
Becoming a.
I, that was not my charge.
For it, yeah.
Now, that, it also brings to mind that we had not too long ago a case where, an application where a temple wanted to go on a particular site. And it was in a, basically in a warehouse area. And we found that there was a, as Mr. Von Aken, a, an industrial site nearby, that by federal law, if there had been a residential occupant in the property next to them, they would no longer be allowed to do their business.
Okay.
And that is something that I think is really important for us to consider when we're, we're doing. I don't want to wake up one day and have a fight between an industrial user that we, has been a great town resident for decades, now being forced out of town because uh, we now have what's technically a residential use.
Well, I, I, I can't speak to the, the example you gave
Right.
because I wasn't here and don't know what it's about. But I can tell you that, um, this will apply to the lot that it applies to, however many they are. And it is not intended to, uh, to, to be any kind of a trigger that would force out a use on a different lot.
Okay, it, it's just something that it's important for us to understand. If we, if we were to pass this, the question would then be if, if we had an application that would force somebody, force a neighbor to change their business, we would have to be aware of that.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't, I don't see how that, how this would trigger that.
We didn't see how, how having a temple would trigger the change in the, in the company that was doing industrial use using chemicals.
Yeah, I.
You know, it's, 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 I'm not opposed to this in any way. I'm saying that I would love if there was some way in here that that would be reviewed to make sure that, that.
Well, I think that's where your, that concern gets raised at site plan.
But, but now you're giving them one less variance that they have to overcome in order to get their approvals. So we, they're gonna come in here and say to the board, well, this is, this is an approved use. So of course we can go here. And that carries weight when the, when the applicant is presenting their case.
Right. It, is it possible within the concept of a conditional use to have it so that it would not affect the neighbors in that way? But that's.
Well, I think one of the provisions is there's like a two-hundred-foot setback. I don't know if that's gonna work towards that. I mean, I remember the example you're talking with, Tom, and it had to do, I'm not sure if it was in our oil zone. Because it had to do with, uh, it was on Halsey Road, and it had to do with the temple in question had priests that lived on, on campus. And that's what created the issue. Um, but bear in mind that in the R O L zone, we do permit hotels as a conditional use already.
Okay, then, then that's.
So we've already, we've already opened the door to people being present in short terms.
And we've modeled the bulk standards for this use on the hotel. The bulk standards for the hotel.
Okay, that makes sense.
And this may actually give us more flexibility in terms of being able to reuse office space. Because we have a lot of zones, a lot of office space. And this could open up some possibilities for new uses to make sure that land doesn't become worthless. Is that the technical term?
And, and that is an excellent segue for me to get into the master plan. Uh, and the consistency with the master plan. Um, I have, I have like five pages of notes, and I'm not gonna, that, if you, if you wanna pin me down on chapter and verse, I'm able to do that, but, um, I can, just in terms of giving you flavor of master plan language that occurs in different spaces or different places in the master plan, that your master plan talks about the fact that we have a lot of retail, or office and retail space that, um, over the course of time, coming out of the Great Recession and, and now with the pandemic, even worse, uh, we have these areas where the buildings are, are much less used, if not totally disused, or big sections of buildings that are totally disused. The master plan notes that, um, the largest change between two thousand and twenty sixteen in our population was the fifty-and-over cohort. And that cohort, um, that's only growing um, since beyond, your master plan, the current master plan was January twenty twenty. We can only assume, uh, we haven't done research, but we can only assume that that trend is continuing. And that there are, uh, the master plan also states that the housing stock in Parsippany is generally overwhelmingly single-family, and we do not have a lot of care facilities for our elderly population uh, being assisted living or, or, uh, independent living for seniors, those kind of, um, of uses. And then just fast-forwarding to, um, section four-point-one, which is entitled Proposed Future Land Uses. Um, and I'm just gonna read this paragraph, or section of a paragraph. Uh, we're talking about a number of corporate office manufacturing zones. They talk about the R O L, P O D, C O D, S E D five, S E D ten. Um, and now specifically, um, so highlighting the R O L, and then going to the next paragraph, it says in, in part, "These areas are major employment centers for the region, but have seen significant vacancies in recent years." "There is a strong interest by some property owners and development community in the introduction of new uses to these campuses, including multifamily apartments." And then it goes on to say, uh, "This land use plan recommends that the corporate office manufacturing designation retain the primary use of office and manufacturing," in this case it would be the R O L, "um, but to allow for a range of supporting and/or complementary uses to be permitted, such as indoor recreation, entertainment, hotels, fitness, daycare, assisted living facilities, and multifamily mixed uses." So while it doesn't specifically speak to the limited continuum of care use, I think the idea of assisted living uh, in twenty twenty has now evolved beyond just simply what we used to know as assisted living. So I think all of this is to say that this proposal, this proposed ordinance is consistent with your master plan.
Okay.
And that is all I have.
Okay. So I, I guess, since I, I've been the lead objectioner, um, I, I guess I'm just concerned still that, um, this is being applied to the entire zone. Uh, rather than, uh, if there was a specific project, I could say, okay, well, the neighbors aren't a problem, you know, but this is being applied to the entire zone. So that's, that's where my largest concern is. And, uh, you know, maybe if somebody wants to speak to that, I'm certainly open to hearing other opinions.
I can say that the R O L zone is somewhat limited. It's not, there's only one of them. And it is not a huge zone
Okay.
that, um, extends, you know, across half the township.
All right.
It's a, a limited area, um.
Yeah, I wasn't sure exactly
It is.
area within the industrial zone it, it was.
If you, it is, see if I can find it here.
And, uh, part of my concern is, I, I work in pharmaceutical manufacturing, or have in the past, and I know what kind of chemicals are in those facilities. And that's where my concern is for people who are residents there.
May I add a comment? Um, so with conditional uses, um, if, if an applicant comes before the board and all of the conditions of the use are met, they, um, the applicant is entitled to the approval. So if there's something specific that is making you uneasy about it, we could add an additional condition saying that it has to be stepped back a certain, um, amount from a specific use within the R O L, just to protect, um, that concern.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it is, um, roughly, uh, I think Inter, Interpace Parkway runs through the R O L zone. And then I'm trying to find.
So it's the Morris Corporate Center.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm trying to find, I had a map here that spoke to the other road that it, is it eighty?
That's on the other side.
Well, it's like, if you go down Cherry Hill Road,
Yeah.
it's right by Cherry Hill Road and where you get onto two eighty from there.
That's, that's where it is.
Yeah, from Cherry, basically from Cherry Hill Road up to Fox, Fox's, uh, Hill Road or something like that.
Yeah, and I mean, there were, there's been approvals in the past for up to, um, Morris Corporate Seven. But I, I think only half of them have really been built. Um, and I know in there there's, uh.
Well, we are putting in that one, uh, residential on Cherry Hill Road next to, uh,
Okay.
where the old BASF used to be.
Okay, because that's in that same area. The other, the other area, the other part of that, too, there's, um, I, I think, didn't UPS's, uh, headquarters went in there?
Yes, well, the techn, technology.
Technology, sorry, yeah, the technology department. They built out one of those sites.
That's up that little side road off of forty-six. Even though it's tech, even though it's on.
It's old Cherry Hill Road, isn't it?
I think so.
The affordable housing zone, that?
Yeah, we just, yeah. Okay.
So, you know, with all of that, um, I would leave it to you to, uh, move it and adopt it or not.
Okay.
All right, so our job here is to, to determine that it's consistent with the master plan and recommend it to the, to the council. Mr. Di Piero, do you have any thoughts on this, of how if we were to do that, how the council would receive it?
I don't see any problem with it. I'm sure they would.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just, uh, you've, you've heard, uh, a possible criticism of this, a potential issue.
Here, here's what I'll say. Um, I think first of all, that I've been dealing with this, uh, issue probably for like two months. If we don't, and this is just my opinion, um, approve this of the ma, consistent with master plan, you're eventually gonna be dealing again with another landadex over there. Um, because the, the individuals that own those properties are gonna wanna build something. You find, like, like, like Stuart said, we have an aging population here in Parsippany. And I know a lot of the seniors don't wanna move out of Parsippany. They wanna have a facility that's not assisted, assisted care, but something they can go to into the later years in their lives. Um, I'm, I'm in favor of it. I'm going to vote yes on it tonight. But I agree with the council president that I think the council feels very comfortable with it. Uh, so, you know, that's the statement I'll make tonight, but if, if we don't deem it, uh, consistent with the master plan, something's gonna go there. And, you know, I've been through it several times, as you know, the Wardview site, um, and stuff like that. Um, people that own properties are gonna wanna use, take the advantage of the affordable housing. That, that'll be the next, um, issue we'll be dealing with then.
After, after getting beat up with affordable housing for the last thirty years, uh, no schoolchildren in this.
No.
No. It's, it's funny, you, you're subjecting changes. All of the developments now, the application has become forest. If there's no schoolchildren, fine.
And Stuart, you, just to, to recap, the master plan specifically cites assisted living within the R O L zone as a possibility, correct?
Uh, at, in section, um, four-point-one, I believe it's, uh, Proposed Future Land Uses, subheading Industrial Large-Scale Commercial, further subheading Corporate Office Manufacturing. And the sentence says, "This land use plan recommends that the corporate office manufacturing designation return the primary uses of office and manufacturing," which it does, "but allow for a range of supporting and/or complementary uses to be permitted, such as indoor recreation, entertainment, hotels, fitness, daycare, assisted living facilities, and multifamily mixed use."
Okay. And as you pointed out, I think the R O L zone is up in the Cherry Hill road section of the industrial area, not down by Edwards Road, and not down by Jefferson Road, right?
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other comments or observations or by members of the board, any questions? Any members of the public have questions on? No? All right. So do I hear somebody making a motion that this appears to be consistent with the master plan and that we recommend it to the council?
And just for clarity, the ordinance, or the land use law requires a motion that the ordinance is not inconsistent, even though it's a double negative. That's just the wording that I'm, that we'll be putting in the communication to the council.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that ordinance number 2022:19 is not inconsistent with the master plan.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion, a second. Ms. Jolie, would you please call the roll?
Barbario.
Yes.
DeDee.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Denzel.
Yes.
Vili.
Yes.
Von Aiken.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Okay. Good conversation.
Can I bring up one other subject?
Yes, sir.
Some of the restaurants, now that we're post-pandemic, wanna keep outside dining. And our ordinance is a bit restrictive. I don't wanna give them all carte blanche, but I'd like to have the planning board or the planner look at our ordinance regarding outside dining and see if we can't make it more user-friendly to the restaurants in town. They're still hurting from the pandemic.
New York City continued their open restaurants program.
We already have an ordinance for outdoor dining. It's through Khalid's office, the county clerk. And applicants have been applying all season. When they apply to the clerk's office, they file the application. He forwards it to numerous departments for their comments, one of them being me. If the site has adequate space for it, not in parking spaces but on a sidewalk, they are permitted automatically 12 parking spaces. Everything, per the ordinance, everything over 12 parking spaces is a parking analysis. I haven't had one restaurant apply that requested a parking analysis. So I am, the health department and the zoning department are very for the way the ordinance is reading right now because it is saving the public. The day you change the ordinance and you allow them back into parking spaces, you put my name and the liability of the town on, so heaven forbid, and there have been cars that drove through them at parking spaces where people were hurt and killed. And I am very much myself, because I had to issue all those permits in the last couple of years, and those restaurants, they're now at 100% occupancy. So when you take away their parking spaces and you sit them in parking spaces, there's not enough parking, there's high volume of traffic, and you're. I didn't mind it when they were only at 50%, because you wanted them to be able to be at 100. So they were 50 in the parking lot and 50 inside, or 2575. But they are now, and I go out to eat all the time in Parsippany, they are at 100% occupancy. So to change the ordinance right now, it makes it very safe. They apply, you have multiple departments that look into it. We make sure that where they're putting it is safe. If they need a parking analysis and they don't have sufficient parking, that means they don't have enough bathrooms and everything, they are an application to board. Unfortunately, many restaurants, they don't wanna spend any money to apply. So you're gonna change the ordinance and you're gonna put those, the customers and the public at risk by changing it. Right now, there's only two restaurants that have asked to be in parking lots and parking spaces. And we recommended alternate avenues where they could come to the board and be heard very quickly at a minor committee meeting. They have chosen not to apply. I had many, many restaurants who never even came and submitted. They put people at risk in parking spaces. They, we had no mechanism because we didn't wanna beat up the restaurants. It's just, it's something that we need to have dialogue on and it's not something that's easy to do. The ordinance is working very well. You basically have two restaurants that are unhappy and that's because they don't have parking lots.
Which two?
I probably shouldn't.
We're on the booming of quarters.
Yeah, I shouldn't give the two.
I'm just curious. Maybe that's where I got the complaint from.
Oh, it's definitely where you got the complaint. Because they told me they were going to the council because I refused to. They, they don't have a safe location to put. And they're at 100% occupancy. And my understanding is they're doing very, very well. But 200% occupancy is even nicer when you can add all those people. And I am not comfortable issuing those permits again in parking spaces.
My commentary on that, just kind of echoing where you're going. New York City saw the same thing in their open restaurants program, right? Obviously, when they couldn't have 20, more than 25% inside, they had people outside. And then they very quickly recognized once it was 100% inside. And then now they're, they've added, you know, you know, another 50, 60, 70% seats because of their outside seating. Essentially, we're doubling their profits, right? They're making a lot more money. So New York City, obviously taking into consideration of where the seating was, is it safe? If everything was deemed safe and they said, okay, if you wanna have this space, you're going to pay us now for all of that extra seating because you're now doubling your occupancy, right? You were able to seat 100, you know, a year ago. Now you're able to seat 170. You're able to accommodate 170 people. Therefore, you're making more money. Therefore, you're gonna pay for more permits. So it's kind of a double-edged sword. I mean, I would agree with, if they're at 100%, great. If they wanna go, you know, above and beyond that, there's gotta be some other policy towards that.
And there are spaces available if they need bigger spaces.
And many of them did apply and they have their outdoor seating on their sidewalks with tables, and that's working. The two that I know complained and who threatened me that they were going to the council are two that unfortunately are doing an amazing business, but they do not have adequate, other than their sidewalk, an adequate lawn space to even submit. So they want to take parking spaces and they want me to just give them a permit and without having to follow the ordinance. So to change the ordinance, you would have to, the only thing I'm not allowing them is I'm not allowing them in parking spaces.
Okay, thank you.
That's what, unfortunately.
That seems appropriate to me, that they not be allowed to use parking spaces during a period of non-emergency. So that if we were to allow them greater outdoor space, it would have to be in a space specifically landscaped for outdoor.
With bollards.
You can see a number of businesses.
In the grass, cars can't drive in there.
Right.
You can see a number of restaurants have built legitimate outside terraces, right? They've gone out, they've got variances and permits and built real structures, not, you know, some cement barriers and stuff like that. So if they wanna expand their restaurant, right? So there are businesses that did take a step forward and say, you know what, we can, we wanna add more capacity. We wanna make it a real structure.
Right, and the state isn't looking to do temporary. They're looking to do until December, November of 2024. So it is, it's not a temporary thing. They're looking to do it until the end of 2024. So anything we change and to meet that is not temporary. It's no longer for COVID. It's for them to, I understand, try to get back some of that money. But there's gotta be a safe way to do it. And my opinion is an application that comes here that we, as a board, can answer those questions where instead I'm just forced to issue them a permit. I think they should come here and be heard by the board and we be able to make those comments about whether, how far away they should be from the road and what barriers are needed versus just a blanket ordinance that we pass.
Propane heaters underneath a tent.
Yes, we had a lot of problems with propane heaters and illegal, you know. It was, it was tough.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's a good discussion, but. All right, any other items that the board should contend with at this moment? Or should we let Nora get home?
I feel the guilt trip wrapping around me right now.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion, Von Aiken.
Do I hear a second?
Second, yep.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed gets to stay here.